Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 1st, 2014. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to apologize for the lack of seating, but I presume that some of you will be leaving shortly, so...[57.89][57.89](Laughter) I hope you can put up with the inconvenience. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 18th City Council Meeting and the March 25th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing April 21st through the 27th as Volunteer Appreciation Week. Mr. DiLorenzo. And I believe accepting the proclamation would be Chick Horowitz.
Whereas April is Florida Volunteer Month and National Volunteer Week was established in April as the official time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers at the local, state, and national levels, and whereas volunteerism strengthens communities, improves social problems, and enhances the overall quality of life for all citizens, including children, seniors, those who are disabled, the impoverished, the imprisoned, the homeless, the physically or mentally ill, or those otherwise in need of assistance, and whereas volunteering changes the lives of volunteers in a positive way, increasing self-confidence, self-esteem, and physical well-being, offering the chance to meet new friends and associates, and providing opportunities to learn new skills and abilities, and whereas volunteerism is proven to have positive influence on businesses that are socially responsible, increasing employee morale, loyalty, and teamwork, and building goodwill towards the company, and whereas nonprofits, charities, community, and faith-based groups, schools, and the national service programs in the city of Palm Coast have joined together with state and local governments in celebration and praise of volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others, and whereas the city of Palm Coast wishes to recognize and thank its more than 300 volunteers for their invaluable contributions for everything from the intracoastal waterway cleanup and adopt-a-road, trail, shoreline, median programs, to fire service and lake water sampling, to city special events, and city volunteer advisory boards and committees, and whereas our country's volunteer force of over 63 million is a great treasure and volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby recognize April 21st through the 27th, 2014, to be Palm Coast Volunteer Week, and call upon the people of Palm Coast to promote the spirit of volunteerism and to observe the week with appropriate activities, programs, and ceremonies. Signed this first day of April, 2014, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.
On behalf of 300 volunteers for the city, I never knew there were that many, we thank
If all the volunteers in the room will please rise. Thank you very much for your service, and as you exit the room, there's a table for all volunteers to visit, so please stop by the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, gentlemen, thank you so much for your service. It would have been impossible for us to achieve the many things that we've been able to achieve as a city and as a community without your assistance. Thank you again.[313.02][313.02](Morse code) We'll give them just a moment. Agenda item number three, a proclamation recognizing Relay for Life, a Flagler event at Central Park in Town Center on April 4th, 2014. Who is receiving the proclamation?
I come.
You've got a group of you. Okay, great.
Okay. We're good, thank you.
Before I read this proclamation, I would like to read the background as to how these proclamations get established. Some of you may know, some of you may appreciate it. The American Cancer Society requests for the support of our community in the fight against cancer by participating in and supporting the Relay for Life, a Flagler event at Central Park in Town Center, Palm Coast. It's an opportunity to not only honor cancer survivors, remember loved ones lost, but also to raise awareness about what we can do to stay well from cancer and raise money to help fuel the world's largest walk to end cancer.[418.62][418.62](Laughter) Give these people a minute to get out before we get in.[435.12][435.12](Applause) I haven't read the proclamation yet.
That's okay.[444.12][444.12](Laughter)
Whereas more than 1 million people in the United States get cancer each year, and whereas the American Cancer Society was founded in 1913 and is dedicated to helping persons who face cancer by supporting research, patient services, early detection treatment, and education, and whereas the American Cancer Society relies on the efforts of thousands of volunteers, as they were just recognized, that help make a difference for people facing cancer each year, and whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life is the world's largest movement to end cancer through which more than 9 million people at more than 5,000 events in 20 countries raise much-needed funds and awareness to save lives from cancer, and whereas at Relay for Life events, communities across the globe come together to honor cancer survivors, remember loved ones lost, and fight back against a disease that has already taken too much, and whereas Relay for Life of Flagler will take place Friday, April 4th, at Central Park in Town Center with dozens of teams and hundreds of participants camping out overnight and taking turns walking or running around the lake until Saturday morning, and whereas in 2013 Relay for Life of Flagler raised approximately $70,000, and for 2014 has set a goal to raise $100,000 to support the efforts of the American Cancer Society, and whereas because cancer never sleeps and is an issue that affects us all, the residents of Palm Coast should provide a solid base of support and community goodwill for the American Cancer Society Annual Relay for Life of Flagler. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of Palm Coast, Florida do hereby recognize the week of March 30th to April 5th as American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Flagler Week. To the city of Palm Coast and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in Relay for Life of Flagler 2014. Signed this first day of April, 2014, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor.[581.16][581.16](Applause)
Oh, thank you very much. Mayor Nets and everyone, thank you so much for your continuous support in our fight against cancer. We look forward to seeing you hopefully on Friday evening. It's going to be a great night, and again, thank you for all your support and everything that you do to help us fight cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.[606.41][606.41](Applause)
Sure.
It's our future chair people.
All right. One, two, three.
That's a good sign.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Mr. McGuire. Receiving the proclamation, Shelley Munson? Is that right?
Whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of efficient transportation and recreation for more than 900,000 people in Florida, and whereas it is important that the drivers of all vehicles be aware of one another and learn to share the road and practice courtesy, and whereas motorcycles provide a means of transportation that uses fewer resources, causes less wear and tear on public roadways, and increases available parking areas, and whereas it is especially important that the citizens of Florida be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the American bikers aim toward education, A-B-A-T of Florida Vintage Chapter, representing the cities of Palm Coast, Benel, Flagler Beach, St. Augustine, and St. Augustine Beach, as well as unincorporated areas within the counties of Flagler and St. Johns, is actively promoting the safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motorist awareness of motorcycles, and whereas it is important to recognize a need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles, and to honor motorcyclists' many contributions to the communities in which they live and ride. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of May, 2014, be officially designated as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast. Signed this first day of April, 2014, City of Palm Coast, Florida, John Nets, Mayor, and we've all worn our colors tonight in honor of motorcycles.[771.12][771.12](Applause)
In the last week, we've had three different fatalities in the area. One of them was our close friend and brother, and one of them was a 20-year-old resident of Palm Coast. We are here, we have trained instructors, we will meet with any school, business, civic organization, and give a free motorcycle awareness class. We're still trying to get into the schools, but it's amazing the wall we get up to on that. Any help that y'all could provide would be most appreciated, but thank you.
Thank you.[811.31][811.31](Applause)
Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, second reading of an ordinance officially naming or renaming certain street segments at the request of Flagler County Emergency Services. Mr. Reichman.
Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance of the city of Palm Coast, Florida officially renaming or designated certain street segments, renaming a segment of Belter Parkway to Old Belter Parkway, renaming a segment of Arrowhead Drive to New Water Oak Drive, renaming a segment of Pine Lakes Parkway to Pine Lakes Parkway North, and officially naming an extension of Pine Lakes Parkway as Pine Lakes Drive as graphically depicted in Exhibit A, providing for updating and distribution of the city map for replacement of the affected street signs for conflict severity and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second reading. This is strictly a, really a housekeeping item, to have our official records reflect what is actually happening out there on our streets. It was a request of our emergency communication 911 system that we take this action. You've seen this in a workshop, you've seen it at the first reading. It doesn't change anybody's address, it really doesn't impact anybody in the field other than just making it very clear for our emergency services as to where the streets are, so Ray is prepared to answer any questions or show you any information, but we believe it's ready for final action.
Counsel questions.
Short question.
Short question.
That was it.
Okay, that was it. Seeing no questions, we'll open the meeting for the public, and if the public wish to be heard, an agenda item number five. Seeing no approach to the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council. Any additional questions, comments, or is there a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor DiLorenzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, resolution approving an interlocal agreement with the supervisor of elections for the 2014 City of Palm Coast elections. Mr. Landon, are you going to lead this one off?
Mayor, City Council, this is something that our city attorney, Bill Reichman, and city clerk, Virginia, have been working on. Bill is actually handling this item, so I'll turn it over to him.
Mr. Mayor, Council, tonight's agenda item, this resolution, will authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement between supervisor of elections and the city of Palm Coast for the supervision and the running of the 2014 city elections, the primary and general. These are to be conducted in conjunction with the county, state, and federal elections this year, as was approved by the voters in the 2011 referendum. Your packet contains two draft interlocal agreements. The first one, and this first one is at your direction, at the council's direction, last Tuesday at the workshop, and is consistent with the supervisor's assertions and statements that we enter into an interlocal with the supervisor, consistent with those others that her offices entered into with other local governments. As it turns out, it's consistent with the direction from the Secretary of State. This is a redlined version of a recently approved interlocal agreement between Flagler Beach and the supervisor of elections, and is paired by your city manager with input, and by me with the input from the city manager and the city clerk. This first draft contains really just those changes to make it specific to Palm Coast rather than Flagler Beach, and also changes given that the Flagler Beach election was a standalone election. Obviously, that election that will be conducted this year for the city of Palm Coast and its voterists is going to be in conjunction with the state, federal, and county elections. And the other changes that were made to the Flagler Beach interlocal agreement, this first item in your agenda packet, sought to address the supervisor's stated concerns that she had been talking about for some time now regarding the 2011 referendum. So that's an oversimplification, but it shows that there are just really minor changes to that prior version that had been entered into between the supervisor and Flagler Beach. Now, the second interlocal agreement within your agenda package is that which has been submitted to the city from the supervisor of elections to be executed as is later than tomorrow, February, I'm sorry, April 2nd, 2014. What has been provided to you this evening, in addition to these two that were in the agenda packet, is a marked-up version, a redlined version of the supervisor's interlocal agreement. Those red lines, those changes are made to address primarily the two changes. In the first one, you'll see there's a strike-through of a whereas paragraph, and the reason that's stricken is because the city is obviously where that the petition is being circulated in the public to potentially place a referendum on the ballot this year in 2014 in the election. The whereas that has been stricken in the supervisor's interlocal, proposed interlocal would not allow that. That petition is in the nature of calling for an initiative, and it's in your charter, and if it gets this sufficient number of signatures, then our charter would require that the requests that contain that petition be submitted to the voters in 2014. So obviously, it was my advice and concurred with your city manager and your city clerk that it would be inappropriate for us to bind ourselves by entering into this interlocal agreement to something that potentially could be inconsistent with our charter. So that's the purpose for that one change. The other changes have to do with conflicts with a prior agreement. Prior agreement between this city council and supervisor of election regarding the use of city offices and city facilities. The strike-throughs and the rest of the changes in her draft interlocal are done so that the city would not be put in a position to provide unnamed, unspecified, unknown city facilities at the discretion of the supervisor. This was, this strike-through is being proposed by your city manager and by me because that was inconsistent with what this council has previously agreed to. So that is the other change that we have made, that we have redlined, that we have created. We've attached both of these to hopefully resolve this matter at this time and to move it forward. Now, there is another option, and that is to, for the council to approve the resolution, and then to move or to vote to allow the execution of either or both of these interlocals, whichever might turn out to be acceptable to the supervisor and to which she would agree to sign. So the resolution would be submitted to her, telling her that if she was willing, she would have the option to choose between the redlined Flagler Beach, for shorthand purposes, interlocal agreement, or her version with the changes that I've just identified, which are just two changes dealing with the need to address a potential initiative petition, and the red lines that we made to confirm, conform with this council's prior decision and agreement with the supervisor regarding use of the city's facilities. So that's the agenda item, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I'm available to address any specific questions you may have regarding this item.
Counsel questions. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Bill, the addendum A, the addendum A in the Flagler Beach redline, we'll call it that, I think that's easy terminology, the Flagler Beach redline includes an addendum A that is completely new, but it matches, as far as I could tell, it matches the addendum that the supervisor asked or had proposed to us in her version. Is that correct?
Word for word.
Okay.
That was, remember I mentioned earlier that the changes that we made to the Flagler Beach were to primarily just change Flagler Beach to Palm Coast and make some changes because obviously that was a standalone election, and so the provisions in the Flagler Beach interlocal would not apply, so it had to be tailored for our election in 2014. I also said that we went ahead and added in changes, added to, supplemented the Flagler Beach to try to address the supervisor's concerns that she has been stating for us and basically since August.
So is it safe to say that the Flagler Beach redline is what has been used previous by the supervisor with other municipal elections, altered because it's not a standalone, so it is, changes in names and dates, right?
Yes.
A paragraph added for her concerns for the previous referendum?
Correct. And then the addendum A.
And then addendum A to address, which was her attempt to address all the provisions that she wanted to conduct the election.
That's, it's her addendum A.
Right.
Verbatim, that was attached to her proposal, which is in your agenda packet. So you're right, same thing. Okay.
Mr. McGuire.
Mr. Reichman, does this interlocal agreement based on the Flagler Beach interlocal provide for putting a referendum on the ballot if something like the red light camera referendum should be eligible to be placed on that ballot?
Yes, it does, and more specifically, it doesn't contain language that prohibits an addition to the ballot, whereas in the draft that the supervisor submitted to us, it was very specific, it said only the two council seats can be placed, that she will only supervise an election where the ballot will contain just the two ballot seat elections, the two council seat elections, excuse me.
Other questions? That provision is unrealistic. I would not want to be a harbinger of doom, but we have had council members pass away while seated on city council, and in those circumstances, depending on the timing, you might need to put that seat on the ballot also. You just cannot limit it to just two. There are two that we know of at the moment. Things could change, and as you say, referenda or other items might occur, so... Additional counsel questions? Mr. DiLorenzo.
Have we, has staff been able to meet with the supervisor at any point in time to discuss, in person, to discuss?
Well, there was one time that Virginia, and correct me if I'm wrong, she actually went down and sat for an hour to an hour and a half to try to work, to meet with her to discuss this, and finally the supervisor election agreed, but did not talk any details. But other than that, she's refused to discuss any of the provisions here with anybody on city staff or attorney.
So staff to staff, she hasn't been available to meet an elected body to elected officials, she hasn't been available to meet either?
We've invited her to, the mayor's personally invited her to the council meeting to discuss this. Correct, and that's why our recommendation is provide her with two options, because we aren't able to sit down and try to work on language that would address any concerns of city council.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Lewis.
Does the supervisor's, rather Flagler, sorry, does the Flagler Beach agreement that has been redlining, does that addresses the right of the SOE to selectively, selectively choose a facility to her choosing in regards to election sites?
If I may, it indicates that if something happens in a polling place that's not available at last minute or unexpectedly, the states will work together on trying to find an alternative location. It doesn't mandate any particular location, but it says we'll work together and the city would assist in finding that. So the short answer is it should not be objectionable to anybody because it just says we'll work together.
Mr. Ferguson.
So what we're trying to decide here is basically how to get this put to bed, put it out of the controversy. So tonight we're here charged with either deciding to send one or both of these to the supervisor to see if she's in agreement with either one of these two. Is that right?
That's our recommendation.
So that's our charge.
And I would recommend that we do that rather than pick one or the other. That way it gives the supervisor of elections the greatest flexibility, whichever one is more comfortable to her.
One being the Flagler Beach and the other being hers.
Being hers with the corrections or the changes to make it concurrent with the decision that this council made. Any other questions?
At a time of the essence, we're led to believe that April 2nd is a drop-dead to either take it or leave it, in the event that we get this to the supervisor by tomorrow and she has to review it or something. I presume there's extra time. Tomorrow's not a drop-dead date?
That is the deadline that the supervisor has provided to us.
Is that a statutory deadline? Is that something that is...
It is not. I've spoken with the city clerk, and there's nothing... I've spoken with, with the city clerk and there's, there's nothing, I cannot tell you why that date was chosen by the supervisor.
Other counsel questions? Seeing none, we open the meeting to the public. And for the public wish to be heard on this agenda item, if so, come up to the podium, give us your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Courtney Chaplin. I'm trying to understand what's been said here. Bottom line, what does this mean to the voter out here? I'm not, you know, when you're talking about the Flagler Beach this and the, and whatever, and red lines and this, what does this mean? If they do one, the other, what does that mean to the voter?
We'll try to get you an answer.
Yeah, in plain English, please, sir.
To the best we can.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Calabam Coast. I read the paper where the, whatever his name is up in Tallahassee sent down the statement to, to the supervisor saying that everything you've done was correct. Now, how does that going to affect this, whatever you're doing?
Try to get you an answer to that one also. Next speaker.
William Vanney, Palm Coast. What happened for the last 10 years that we, that allowed us to have elections and what changed that makes it necessary that we have a different agreement that we might have had for the past 10 years? What, what changed? What happened?
We'll try to get you an answer.
Evening, everyone. Dennis McDonald. You know, I'm sitting in the back of the room. I had some prepared stuff here, but I'm sitting and trying to understand the problem here because it really comes down to the people of Palm Coast deserve a fair and equitable way of being able to vote in our election this fall. So I sit here and I listen to you, and, and one of the things that's interesting is, is that none of our officials have bothered to take the time to go down and get in their car and go down and have a discussion with the SOE. I find that interesting. You're all free to do that. There's no sunshine law on that, but nobody's done that. So, and, and also the other thing that I can't come away with is the fact is that this is all about, you talk about cities, you know, about how Flagler Beach is or, or another city. I, I missed, I guess I'm missing the point here. This fall, gentlemen, is an election that is county, state, and federal, and you are asking to be put on a ballot that the supervisor of election must prepare under the requirements of the state of Florida for that election. And so you're asking kind of for a free ride on the bus. And you want to make this all about you rather than the fact that you have decided to coincide and you changed the charter to make it coincide. So when you go and you make it coincide, well, then you must accept the limitations that are going to be in that. And consequently, the bottom line here is this isn't your election anymore. This is a county, state, and federal election. And one of the things to, to bring to the forefront here is, is that you're all aware of a email that Gary Holland, the DOE attorney, sent around, and I know that everybody's got it. It's from October 23rd of 2013. First paragraph, "The only requirement which I am aware that the election code places upon you for municipal elections is found in State Statute 101.002, which requires you to furnish a voter records for conducting a municipal election to the municipal election official," which would be the city clerk. "The intent underlying of the election code is the municipalities are responsible for their own elections absent an agreement with the county." Case closed, gentlemen. I mean, I read this back a number of months ago and I said, I don't understand where this is all coming from. You know, you're asking for an opportunity to take a, a cheap ride on the bus on the county ballot, but yet you guys want to make it all about yourself. I, I don't understand, you know, you know, why this is so difficult to get done. I really don't. You had a good election in 2011. I never heard any problems from, from this council about any problems that went on, went down with the SOE, that it wasn't properly conducted with your election in 2011. So she's the, essentially, she's the only subcontractor that you guys have got short of doing it yourself. So consequently, if you relate it to your own experience in your home, either you do what the licensed electrician says, okay, or you wire the house yourself. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Celia Buglisi, resident of Palm Coast, and I appreciate you for letting me talk in this meeting. First of all, I want to remind our city council that we have a supervisor of elections and that she was selected with the proper training and expertise on election laws. I think that we need to respect our constitutional officials that have been elected, especially our supervisor of elections. She was selected by a great majority of the electorate in this county and city and whatever. It would be the same like if the city will try to run, our council will try to run the sheriff department and demand the sheriff to accept some agreement, which it should be written when it comes to elections, the election laws are complicated, and these agreements are to be written by and accepted from the supervisor of elections. I, I'm speaking in favor of our city voters because I've been working for many years for both supervisor of elections as a, as a precinct clerk to make sure that our elections are fair with both, with both our past supervisors' elections being great. She, this current supervisor knows how she does this. She's fighting for us, for the voters. I read her 10-page interlocal agreement and, and she's supposed to write this agreement. She is the expert on election laws. It's not our city council, no matter how many lawyers we spend money in. First of all, she's protecting us because in one of the items that you refused, she is requesting that she has to have the community center as one election place. Why is that? Because the community center, I know as a precinct clerk, is the largest registered electoral precinct in this city. Now, if you have the right to decide to move us from using this place, you would accommodate all the local around here, largest electorate precinct. Maybe you send us to vote on the Boondocks. Is that going to be better for the voters? Sirs, I want to tell you, this is just one of those items that we need to, we need to reassure. This supervisor of election was selected by great majority of our electorate because she's honest and she works by the law. And she's defending the voters of our county and city, and she's defending also our taxpayers' monies because she's concerned that she might be named on a lawsuit, that the city might get involved if the election is challenged. And do we, any of us, want to be named on a lawsuit for which we have no decision made? So please, I will appreciate, accept as a precinct election clerk on every election for many years, I will appreciate for the sake of the voters and fair elections, you accept our supervisor of elections agreement as was presented and don't make any changes. You are not the experts on elections laws. She is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Look, I wasn't going to say anything, but I think I must say something about this. Over 70% of Palm Coast voted for this change. And ever since the change was made from, from odd year to even year, the supervisor of election came down and she all of a sudden said something is wrong with it. Now, if the state attorney says nothing is wrong with it, and this one says nothing is wrong with it, and that one said nothing is wrong with it, and then she writes up some cockamamie thing, look, some of y'all have been on, in businesses and everything, and there's a give and take on anything. But the one thing that I can figure out from this whole thing is since, since Flagler Beach, Benell have odd years when they have elections, it's called follow the money. And if it's cheaper for us to do it on an even year, and if we go back to the odd year, it will be more expensive for all of us in Palm Coast. And we can't have, we can't have any individual over, over, y'all are elected to do the bidding of the city of Palm Coast. And that means, and that means that no, no one entity other than the state can come in and say, we want you to use this facility or use that part of the facility or this, that, or the other. This is not right. And I don't think she, this is, what this lady is trying to say is you, you can't do all of those things. But this has really perturbed me because my, the only thing I can say is follow the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion of meeting. Let's see if I can address some of the questions. The first, the first speaker asked an analysis of this discussion in simple language. I can give you my interpretation. In 2011, in 2010, leading up to 2011 elections, there was discussions with the supervisor of election about the possibility, feasibility, desirability of moving the Palm Coast elections from the odd number of years when they would be so-called standalone elections. The only thing that would be on the ballot would be Palm Coast. It would require the mobilization of all the staff, all the poll workers, all the equipment to hold a, an election that would be just for the city of Palm Coast. As has been pointed out by any number of people over the recent years, voter turnout at these standalone elections is relatively small. So in discussion with the supervisor of elections, there were two advantages suggested for moving the election to the even numbered years and piggybacking on a state, federal, and county election. One, the mobilization costs would be shared. Contrary to Mr. McDonald's allegation that the city's looking for a free ride, the intent has always been that we would pay our proportionate fair share of the ballot. So, but the costs, the taxpayer would be less. And at least in theory, the voter turnout would be greater because if you're not motivated to vote for a city council, you might be voting, motivated to vote for a county commissioner or a governor or any of the other things that might be on this, this combined ballot. That was the intent. The city council put that on the ballot in 2011, and as Mr. McCarthy pointed out, the vast majority of Palm Coast residents approved it. We thought it was a fait accompli, a done deal. More recently, the supervisor of elections issued a demand to the city of Palm Coast that she be allowed to use this room, the room we're presently in, for early voting and for the general elections. The problem that we have in Palm Coast is that this room is also used for city council meetings, code enforcement board meetings, planning board meetings, and a number of other meetings, as well as rented out to the public. Any number of organizations hold their meetings here. In years past, the two rooms at the far end of the corridor were set aside for elections, both early voting and general elections. The city suggested that that would be adequate for this 2014 election. Supervisor expressed concerns that there might be delays, there might be holdups, that people might be inconvenienced, and that the room might not be large enough to accommodate them. City council offered a compromise. Since early voting tends not to be heavy, or at least not as heavy as the general election day, we said, we will provide those two rooms for early voting and we will provide this room for the primary election and the general election. We thought that was the, and there was an agreement. We felt there was an agreement with the supervisor of elections. Then the issues arose, supervisor of election arose concerns about, arose concerns about the legality of the 2011 election. State law says that when you modify the charter, which is what that election did, you have to register that with the Secretary of State. There's no timeframe. You don't have to do it within 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. We did not do it until much later. We did it. Supervisor still felt that there was an issue that it might not be valid. State law, state statute provides two ways to change the charter on this kind of an issue. One is by referendum, which is what we did in 2011. The other way is by ordinance of the city council. In an abundance of caution, city council passed those ordinances. To me, this is belt and suspenders. They both accomplish the same thing. If one is not valid, the other certainly is. There have been a number of opinions given, including from the Secretary of State, that what Palm Coast did is perfectly legal and acceptable. Supervisor is still concerned that there might be a challenge, and therefore, the city of Palm Coast has said, we will sign a, an ancillary agreement, holding the supervisor of elections harmless. If there were a challenge, it would be the obligation of the city to defend that challenge. The most recent interlocal agreement, and I use the word agreement because the agreement implies two parties. There has to be agreement. This is not unilateral. The most recent interlocal agreement that the supervisor provided says that the city will be limited to two seats on the ballot. And we've already had that discussion, that conceivably there might be three seats. I hope not, gentlemen. We don't know whether the citizen-initiated referendum will gather sufficient signatures to be on the ballot, but if, if it, if they do, then that has to go on the ballot. Now, obviously, if the supervisor says that the ballot is this long and two names takes up this much, if you want to put a third name or you want to put a referendum, then your, your proportionate fair share is going to be greater. That's perfectly acceptable with the city. Most recently, we've received a communication from the supervisor of election saying that April 2nd tomorrow is the deadline, that if we do not sign, if we do not reach an interlocal agreement, she will not conduct our elections. That's why I asked our attorney, is this a statutory obligation, this date, or is it something else? So that in a nutshell is, is the issue. Let's see now. There was another comment about the Secretary of State. Secretary of State supervised the Division of Elections. There's been correspondence back and forth between the supervisor of elections and the Secretary of State. We thought the Secretary of State provided a reasonable analysis of the situation. A, that the city was correct in creating this charter change, and that it was reasonable that the city of Palm Coast be treated the same as the other cities. Now, obviously, Flagler Beach, Benell, standalone election, this is a combined election, but otherwise, the terms and conditions ought to be similar. That was our understanding. Question was raised, what has changed? What has changed is the working relationship between the supervisor of elections and the city council. the city council. Another question was raised, why has no member of the city council met individually with the supervisor of elections to resolve this issue? And I think I can speak for council members, is because individuals cannot speak for city council. This has to be a decision that all council members share. I've already commented about the, the comment that this is a free ride. Of course, we're never looking for a free ride. Question was raised about the similarity between agreements with the city of Palm Coast, supervisor of elections, city of Palm Coast, and the Sheriff's Department. Interesting analogy. No, we don't tell the sheriff how to run the Sheriff's Department, but we do negotiate and arrive at a mutually satisfactory inter-local agreement. That's the goal with the supervisor of elections. The last comment that I have has to do with the community center. We have never suggested that the community center is not the right place to hold an election. We agree completely. The, at issue was, do we displace the organizations and the, and the city meetings that are held in this room, and basically, for 14 days, turn this room into an election room? Or do we do, use the other two rooms at the end of the hall for primary voting, and then on election day, when you expect the larger turnout, use this room? That's the, the other issue. And that, I hope answers the questions that were raised. Mr. Landon, Mr. Reichman, any misstatements, or anything you'd like to add?
One, one thing, just clarification. We've attempted to use this building for early voting in the past, but the state law did not allow that. Mayor, you made the statement that we've used this for early voting in the past. We've always used it as a polling place, but early voting has always only been at, in Palm Coast.
That's correct.
Just one clarification.
Yeah. That's a recent change in state law. It used to be that a community center was not eligible for early voting. It had to be a, a city hall, or whatever.
Right. There was a list of appropriate places in the statute.
But in past, all the elections that were held here were held in those two rooms.
Just a minor, you asked for correction, that was a minor.
Yeah. Back to city council. You've heard the manager, you've heard the attorney, you've heard from the residents, you've heard my recitation or dissertation.
Elegy in the country churchyard.
Something like that. My suggestion to council is that you authorize the submission of both of these documents, with the hope that the supervisor of election will find one or the other acceptable. And I, I think, in an abundance of caution, if, if I'm not seeing something, or if our attorney is not seeing something, I'd like to submit these documents also to the Secretary of State, for his perusal. Does he see one or the other as being more consistent with the, the state's goal for fair and open and efficient elections?
And Mr. Mayor, that certainly can be done. There's, there's no reason that can't be done. I did send to Mr. Holland last week a copy of this agenda item. So, the Secretary of State's office already has a copy of the, the two items that were in, the two interlo, draft interlocal agreements that were with the, the agenda item, and that would have been the, the revisions to the Flagler Beach, as well as the supervisor's unchanged draft interlocal. So, we certainly, if, if this is the council's desire, can reiterate to the Secretary of State that we would appreciate, or would follow his direction with regard to the various drafts, and, and send with, with that also, the changes that we've made to the supervisor's draft interlocal. Those, those three different versions could be submitted to the, to the Secretary of State, with some sort of request for his input, following up on the direction that he provided to supervisor last Friday.
Your Honor.
Mr. McGuire.
If, if the proposals, both of them, are submitted to the supervisor of elections, and neither of them is found acceptable, do we have any recourse to mediation from any state agency?
I, I would suggest that, if you would like, you could put in your motion, that if that's the case, that we call on the Secretary of State, you know, it was the State Division of Elections, ask for their assistance, and see if they can't help come up with a document that would be acceptable to both parties. I think that would be very appropriate.
Is there any precedence for that?
Our attorney is understanding that, yes, it is.
There, there is, and, and the statute is, that, that, that controls, is in Chapter 97 of the Florida statutes, and subsection 012 says, "The Secretary of State is Chief Elections Officer, and it provides 16 specific responsibilities for the Secretary of State as the Chief Elections Officer." And the last one provides, it says, "States, provide written direction and opinions to the supervisors of elections on the performance of their official duties with respect to the Florida Election Code or rules adopted by the Secretary of State." There, there's no specific provision in the statute that speaks to arbitration by the Secretary of State, or by mediation. But I would, I would submit to you that, that would be something that he would have the authority to do. Whether he would be willing to do that, I do not know.
This has been dragging on for a long time now, and I think we need to bring it to a head. I agree with Mr. McGuire. We have to bring in, bring in someone who can help us meet these obligations between the city of Palm Coast and the SOE. I think, I don't know if that was a motion or not, but if it-
Oh, it was almost, but you cut me off.
But I will, I'll yield to your motion.
Your Honor, I move that these two agreements that have been drafted be presented to the supervisor of elections, and that they be, be presented in accordance with her requested deadline, and that if neither of these is acceptable, we attempt to secure mediation from the Secretary of State.
Second. Moved in second. Further discussion. Mr. Ferguson.
I think something has to be said about the voters here. Nothing that has taken place has made it any worse for the voters, other than the protracted agreement to this interlocal agreement. Everything that the city council has done has made it more accessible and fair, but perhaps not efficient because of this agreement. But everything about this election is going to be to the benefit of the voter. Everything that's taken place up to now has been argumentative, and picky, and, and to my understanding, just unwarranted. But we have to deal with it, and, but the voter has always been kept in mind here, because that's what the voters wanted when they voted in 2011, to have this be part of the general election, rather than the standalone election. So, everything, the accommodation to the rooms, the early voting, everything was, was agreed to. The unfortunate thing is that, that, you know, we, we've gotten down to the short strokes here, and frankly, elevating it to the Secretary of State, it's already been elevated to the Secretary of State. And he said that, from what I interpret the thing, is that, you know, we should be able to work these things out. I mean, the way I look at it, there's only a couple of things here. One, we don't want the supervisor to renig on the prior agreement as to the rooms. That's number one. Number two, should the unlikely or possible event be that a, had an amendment be placed on the ballot? We'd like that opportunity to do that. And, you know, the, these shouldn't be deal-breaking kind of things. I mean, you can make an agreement, and if, if the future changes, you can re-agree to, to the changes. So, you know, we, rather than to make this into a federal case and get the state involved, I think that we're ninety-some percent in agreement, with the exception of these picky yuan items, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be the Secretary of State to try to be the mediator here, but I hope that doesn't get that far.
I hope so, too.
From your lips to God's ears, yes.
May I just add? For the, for the voters, I hope that the supervisor will negotiate in good faith. This is an agreement. It's, so far, all we've received is a demand and no opportunity to negotiate. And we're, we're trying to send some options back, and as you most eloquently put, they're, they're not big deals. They're, they just keep in place the deals we already have. And I hope we can solve this now, finally, and have a good election, because that was the point, was to improve voter turnout by putting it on the ballot with the rest of the county. And so I hope we can, I hope we can do that.
Again, two-part. Absolutely right. The goal was increased voter turnout, and also to save the taxpayers' money.
Just quickly, interlocal agreements are not strange animals, really. We have these with all the county agencies all the time. We've always had it with the supervisor of elections. So, it's not the, I know in one statement she made that she's the one who makes the interlocal agreements, well, you have to have two parties. So, I, I think, just to say, well, this is a problem, is not the problem. The problem is, who's want to sit on top of the pile? And I think we, if the pile is big enough for all of us to sit on top of it. So, let's get this thing moving.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Bill, would you restate your motion, please, just so everybody knows what they're voting on?
I move that these interlocal agreements, agreements, both of them, be submitted to the supervisor of elections, Kimberly Weeks, for her perusal and hopefully acceptance. And further, I move that in the event that neither of these is acceptable, that we request the Secretary of State to somehow mediate this issue.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection.
And for clarification, we will, at your instruction, forward the motion and resolution and documents to the Secretary of State for his consideration and-
And Mr. Landon, she had requested this by noon. Are you going to have it hand-carried out there, or what?
Virginia Smith will take care of that, make sure that happens, yes.
Okay.
Agenda item number seven, a resolution supporting legislation that restores home rule to local government relating to the regulation and zoning of short-term vacation rentals. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, city council, this is actually a proposal that largely was initiated by Flagler County because of neighborhoods on the beach that was experiencing more and more of short-term rental units in their single-family homes. And some of them became very large, and they were building very large homes with, being able to accommodate a lot of people, with the idea that they had no intention of actually keeping them single-family, but renting them, which has an impact on the neighbors. A few years ago, the state legislature preempted local governments from regulating such activity, and saying that basically, these were exempt from our zoning codes at the local level, and that we could not do anything to disallow or to regulate this type of activity in residential areas, which obviously is contrary to most zoning requirements that are local matters. Because of the requests of some neighbors, our state legislature representatives, Senator Thrasher and Representative Hudson, proposed a bill that would allow local governments to start regulating these again under their zoning code. That is being considered right now in Tallahassee by the state legislature. Flagler County commissioners have requested your support in to pass this resolution to indicate your support for their efforts. And, and if this is passed by you tonight, then we will forward that on to the governor and, and state representatives for, for their consideration as another local government that supports the legislation that is being proposed right now. It, it doesn't change any of our rules today, but if it is, does pass, then we will have to address this issue with our zoning code, consistent with the new state law, if it, if there is a new state law.
Council questions.
Your Honor, as I understand it, this is, this is not a, has no effect on any Palm Coast statutes, or, or charter, or anything else. This is a, this is a document that expresses, excuse me, expresses to the state legislature our support for the home rule bill that's in front of them now, sponsored by Senator Thrasher and Travis Hudson.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Up until several years ago, this was a local zoning land development issue. In what I believe was a good-faith effort to try to stimulate the economy, a year ago, two years ago, a year ago, two years ago, the Florida legislature passed legislation saying that unless a city or a county had legislation on the books as of that date, they were prohibited from making any attempts to regulate short-term vacation rentals. The thought was that properties, homes, that you maybe couldn't afford, you're upside-down in your mortgage, if you could rent it out as a vacation rental, it might get you through the recession. What nobody anticipated, and I think Mr. Landon alluded to this, was the fact that there are homes being built in single-family neighborhoods in Flag, in unincorporated Flagler County, that have, I may get the numbers wrong, but council members, you saw this in the workshop, a dining room that seats twenty-four, fifteen, twenty bedrooms, ten bathrooms. In my mind, it would have to be a very large family to, to fill such a home. It, in, in every sense, except zoning and land development code, it's a hotel, a mini hotel, and that's what the, yes. Dining area twenty-four plus, two kitchenettes, eleven bedrooms, ten bathrooms, sleeps twenty-four.
And a porch.
So, the issue, to the extent that, to the extent that Palm Coast had regulations prior to the state preemption, those remain in place. We're, Flagler Beach is going to record supporting the county. I'm supporting the county on this issue. We so far have not had any of these McMansions built in Palm Coast. Doesn't say we couldn't. But the bigger issue to me is, is home rule. Land development code, zoning, those are local issues. That is best left to local government. If the locals want something, yes. If they don't want something, that's fine too. Anyway, so. Council questions? Open the meeting of the public. Open the public, which we heard on agenda item number seven, resolution supporting Flagler County's efforts to have the state rescind its preemption of local government on the issue of short-term vacation rentals. The podium give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Dave Sullivan, Palm Coast resident. I support the whole idea of the local government having control. My problem is that in the latest additions of the legislation in Tallahassee, they're changing it. So, here you're saying you're going to support the legislation. Supposing the legislation comes out that is not in agreement with what you're saying here. You're saying we're supporting the legislation. I just think, you know, the session is over in two or three weeks, four weeks, I think. Why not just wait and see what, see what happens, and then, and then support the legislation if you, if you agree with it?
Next speaker. Signal approach the podium. Up, come on.
I came to this meeting, mine as well. I came to this meeting, mine as well, giving my opinion. I support that the county and the city support the legislation, because it protects the neighbors to those places that are rented to large amounts of people.
Thank you. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, come back to council. The first comment, my goal is not to support the current legislation. My goal is to support Flagler County in its efforts to have rescinded the legislation that preempted local government.
And, and the, the resolution, I think, does address the citizens, the gentleman's concerns. If you look at section two in the actual resolution, while it does reference the Senate Bill 356 and the House Bill 307, it says, "And legislation that restores home rule to local governments, allowing local governments to determine the best needs of their community in the regulation of zoning and short-term vacation rentals." So I would hope that that language is contained in the resolution. If it's, if it's read up in Tallahassee, will, you know, they'll, they'll, they should understand that what we're looking for is legislation that's, that's going to give back to us, restore back to Flagler County, and to the extent as necessary, Palm Coast, the ability to, to dictate our own land development code.
Additional questions, comments, or motion? Mr. DeLorenzo.
I think the gentleman makes a very good point. And-
I think the gentleman makes a very good point. And we -- the solution I would propose that we either strike the bill numbers out of the section two and one of the whereas has it as well, or we include the words "original" language, because I think that is really what we are trying to agree upon, is that we like -- the original language was important to us, the original language that returned home rule, not necessarily what has been added to this point, because it changes quickly. Shall I make a motion?
You'd like to make a motion amending the resolution to coincide with your suggestions?
Yeah, I will make that.
Before you do that...
Mr. Lewis.
To get back to what you were saying, on the page 22 of the resolution, the targeted page, you're saying that this is not satisfactory to you, what the gentleman is saying? That deals with home rule and local government?
Yeah, but it still also calls out the bills themselves. And I think the Senate bill has remained essentially the same, but the House bill, I believe, has changed significantly. But I'm not fluent in the changes.
So you want to strike out that particular whereas?
Well, or just remove the bill numbers themselves and say that we support the efforts of our representatives to restore home rule for vacation rentals.
If we just strike that whereas paragraph, that whole paragraph?
Mr. Mayor, could I make a suggestion?
Please.
You could change it so it would read, whereas Senator Thrasher's and Representative Hudson have filed legislation restoring the ability of local governments to regulate short-term vacation rentals according to the needs of their individual communities. Make that wordsmithing in the whereas.
That's fine.
And then, consistent with the council member, make changes to section two to say, Mayor of the City Council urges the state administration for the legislature to support. And then you could either say the original versions of, or just say to support any legislation that restores home rule. Either way, I think that wordsmithing would achieve your concern. Councilmember DeLorenzo.
That's good.
Yes.
That's acceptable?
Yes.
Motion and second. Further discussion?
No, I think the -- between what Mr. Reichman and Jason have said, I think amalgamating those two and changing this is the way to go, and I support it.
We have a motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda, items eight through 12. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda before we do? If anyone in the public would like to speak on any of these consent agenda items with the thought of perhaps having a council member withdraw it, this is an opportunity for anyone from the council, anyone from the public to speak on the agenda items eight through 12. Otherwise, they'll be considered as consent agenda in one motion. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Anyone wish to remove anything from consent agenda?
No, dear.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on anything not on today's agenda, anything that may have been raised at a workshop, might have been raised any other time, or anything that comes to your mind. This is your opportunity to speak. Up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Good evening. I'm from Mayotte, Tennessee, in Brookshire, Lake, Palm Coast. I've been fighting with your bureaucracy of trying to get my swale fixed up for the last two years. I call people, people show up, they agree with me that I have a problem with my swale. Two years ago, they dug it out and made mine lower than the downstream, which makes mine a pond every time it rains. And the water stays there for months at a time. If it rains two or three days in a row, forget it. I've had water for six months, putrefied. No grass. I got a strip about this wide all across my front yard, no grass. Now, I keep calling, I keep getting promises. First it was they had to do the engineering thing, then they got the engineering thing. I thought you had a rule that within six months, you were supposed to be taken care of. What happened to that rule? And where am I going to get some relief?
We'll get an answer to your question. Don't go away. I'm going to ask Mr. Adams, who is the Director of Public Works, to meet with you after the meeting. Perhaps you can get some answers. Mr. Adams, you see the gentleman? Mr. Adams, back there. Next speaker.
Hi. My name is Heidi Shipley, and I live in District Two. And there are a lot of streets that I've been walking up and down that have the swales in front of them that aren't -- some of them are staying there for a whole week. One in particular is between Frenoo, when you come off of Frenoo from Old Kings, right there at the corner where the stop sign is. It's almost like a moat that goes all the way down the end of the street. That one, and there's many of them in the F-section that people are complaining about that they just don't go down. They cause an odor, they increase the amount of mosquitoes these people are getting. And on Fanshawe, there's an easement. And then as I walked around, I realized there's a couple of easements. And the easements, one is on Fanshawe, their grass is overgrown, it's filled with water. And I guess they've actually come out and put flags around the area and said they were going to be back to fix it. And then the flags got taken away, nothing ever got done. And the neighbors are actually digging out some of these swales and trying to fill this area. They can't even mow their lawns because if they go to mow their lawn, there's a little hill that you have to go up and down. And it actually becomes dangerous if kids were to fall in there. And there is a lot of issue with that. Every place I walk down, every street I walk down, in my area, which is the F-section, I see the same thing.
Again, I'll ask you to meet with Mr. Adams outside.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Jimmy Epps, Palm Coast. I'm here about Holland Park, Dog Park. We've been talking about this for over a year. We're at the same place we were a year ago. It's dirty, it's not healthy, we have sicknesses, we have dogs getting hurt. We're now too small, we have no parking. We're parking all down the street. You have rocks out to the street. I'd just like to know where we are and what we have in mind for the future, because I haven't seen a thing. I mean, our sidewalks, we still have 10, 12 inches drops, we have no water. We've been fortunate that it's been raining for about the last month. And it does take care of the dust, but we have a lot of problems in there. I'd just like to know what's in line for the future.
We'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Emily Burke, and I'm from Palm Coast. And I have the same question regarding the dog park at Holland Park. It's really bad. If you all have dogs or don't have dogs, I think you should all visit, at least take a look before you even just, you know, come up with a resolution. It has been over a year, and we really want something done. I know we have a budget, but what is happening with it? And where is the budget? Is it going to the dog park? Or is it going to the kids' park? We just want an answer. And soon, please.
We'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Jack, you're disappointing me. Seeing no one approach the podium, we close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Mr. Landon, I've referred the two swale concerns to Mr. Adams. Would you give us an update on Holland Park and specifically the dog park?
Yes. Very pleased to say that it has been budgeted this year. And the renovation of the dog park is scheduled to occur in 2014. I was trying to look real quick as to when it's scheduled to actually get started. I think I have that here. Give me two seconds to give you a date. Holland Park is scheduled to start beginning of June with the major renovation that will totally redo the dog park and irrigation. And we have met with representatives of the pets about the details. The city council's asked as far as the amenities and those type of things. And I know there's a lot of dog owners that use it, but our park team believes that we have worked well together with them. And you're going to see this summer, major, major changes occur out there. It's already been budgeted, city council supports it. We'll be out to bid soon. You know, obviously, it takes city council's final action to award the contract, but there's nothing other than just the final details of design and going through that process to get the project started that we're waiting for at this point.
Estimated cost, do you remember the total cost of the...
It's a phased project, is it not?
I know it's -- we put over a million. I believe we're over a million this first year and...
Yeah, but that's for the whole park, not just the dog park.
Right, of course, of course. A million dollar dog park.
I have got the schedule in front of me. I didn't actually bring the dollar amount. I just started the fourth quarter, if I do that right, July 1st, not June 1st. I got the wrong day. But it's the start of the fourth quarter is what I have here, which is July 1st.
Do you have any input from dog people?
She asked it. We get input from -- we have met with a variety of dog people.
We've had several presentations about the dog park, and I selected, essentially from the presentation, three individuals, asked them to meet with city staff, and they have done that.
Yes. And we've had other -- I mean, there've been a variety of people we've tried to meet with to get input. Key to it is, is we're not just going in and trying to fix it. We're redoing the whole thing. It'll be a new location, much larger. I mean, we're talking a whole new dog park that's designed as a dog park versus what we have now, which is designed as anything else but a dog park, but converted to it, and then therefore the problems.
Okay. Discussion by city council matters not only agenda. Mr. Ferguson, we'll start with you.
I don't think it's appropriate to do an April Fool's joke tonight, so.
Appreciate that. Mr. DeLorenzo.
Not very appropriate tomorrow night.
Mr. Lewis.
Just one small thing on swales. Swales have been with us since, I think, Florida's been around. You know, you find swales almost everywhere in Florida. Sometimes the developers get around them by putting in very expensive drain pipes and that sort of thing. But when ITT, my understanding is when they put this place together, this was a swamp land, so a lot of draining was done. And the water runs from, I believe, west to east to the Atlantic Ocean. So the water is going to be there, no matter what we do, because when it rains, it's going to sit and settle and eventually drop down to wherever the main flow is and go out to the ocean. But I have a swale in front of my house, and if I didn't understand the swale system, I'll be cursing back and forth. But the water's there. If you want to rise like I am, the water flows down into the swale, and it's a continuous thing. And they've been to my place to redress, to address that. But there's a little pamphlet the city put out some years ago, and I think it's a very interesting pamphlet. It kind of simplifies things, but it gives you an idea on what the swales are and what the city is trying to do. You know, at one time, the city had a very large workforce. Now we down to a very small workforce and trying to do the same jobs. So I think you should report your concerns to the city, and I'm sure Tony and his crew will try and get to you as soon as they can. But you have to understand, this is a situation that's not going to go away.
Mr. McGuire.
I just wanted to report that we had our second meeting of the committee headed by Casey Ryan to discuss the senior games that were going to take place here in September of this year. Thus far, we've got nine events that we're scheduling, and each of them has a person that's sort of heading up the efforts. But basically, in the week of September 13th through and including the 19th, those will be the -- or 20th, I should say, those will be when the senior games are going to be in the city of Palm Coast. We expect this to be a big tourist draw. We had one last year, and we worked with the state board on that. But this time, Luann has been able to get us a lot more liberty, if you will, to conduct our own games. There will be more games and more competition, and I think it's going to be an exciting event. And I think the success that we're going to build on that will allow us to move further on up the food chain into something like the Sunshine State Games, which is open to all ages and takes, well, the cities that have it now, basically, the city is logjammed for three straight days, and that's Lakeland, which is not a small town. But I'm excited about it. I'm part of the committee, and I'm proud to be working with Casey Ryan. And I think we're going to have a real good lineup of sports for people 50 and up that'll run a broad spectrum of interest. Other than that, I just want to make a comment that I hope that we can come home with an agreement with our supervisor of elections. We, and I think I speak for the council here, we do not want to conduct an election. We want the SOE to conduct the election. And to that end, I'm here to do whatever I can in my own way to help bring this about. This has been a trying time for everybody on the council, and I'm sure it's had its share of trauma at the SOE office, too. But I hope and I pray that we can bring this to a successful conclusion and do it quickly. That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Discussion by city attorney of matters, a lot on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, counsel one item. I'm pleased to present to you tonight a draft resolution for your consideration, which will approve a settlement agreement. Actually, it's termed as a mediation agreement. In a release, on March 19th of this year, last month, your city manager and Deborah Babnutcher, who you met at our last meeting, which we talked about that lawsuit with regard to Palm Coast Plantation Homeowners Association and the city over utilities, potable water, stormwater, or wastewater and pre-annexation agreements. That lawsuit's been going along for a while, and we spent -- they spent a long day in Orlando, a long day in Orlando, but pleased to announce that a compromise was reached. And that agreement, that compromise is memorialized in the settlement agreement and release, and it's for your consideration tonight. And if you will vote for the resolution, that will authorize, that will authorize and approve the settlement agreement. And then, once it's approved by the Board of Directors for the association, it becomes a binding contract, and we'll put this matter to rest.
Counsel, questions?
It wouldn't hurt to understand what was agreed to without us agreeing. Is that...
No, no, I'm happy to.
I mean, with all the legalese, the highlights.
I'll do my best.
Let's not go overboard here.
English, unfortunately, I've been doing this so long enough, is kind of a foreign language, but I'll do my best to speak that.
You know, a lawyer is somebody that when you ask him what time it is, he tells you how to build a clock.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll try to keep the clock out of it. This started in 2010. Palm Coast Plantation, obviously, is a community, a subdivision outside the city limits. And we have a provision in our code which is authorized by state law that says, when you want, if you're outside the city and you want to have utilities, a city has the right to request that you become part of the city, if you're going to have those city services, those utility services. And so the city has enacted an ordinance sometime in the past to provide for that process. Now, that process also includes exceptions, which is really what happened here with this... interlo, excuse me, this mediation agreement. And under certain circumstances, if there's special circumstances, then that general rule can be put aside for specific situations. So the homeowners association felt that they fit within one of those exceptions, and they brought a lawsuit against the city to try to make that argument. The, been going on for some time, there were some issues that the city had with regard to the merits of the lawsuit, some specifics of the lawsuit, what they, some of the remedies they were asking for, got those worked out in the pleading stage, then went to mediation. The mediation agreement is going to provide that they will not have to sign the settlement agreements, it provides why this, why they meet the exception, why there are some special circumstances, why this community, this subdivision is not required to sign this. And then it also, there was some agreements in there that notwithstanding that, the existing annexage, pre-annexation petitions will not be affected by this agreement, so that's good. And furthermore, at a later date, the city can call for a vote of the community and to annex in as a community as a whole, to become part of the city, and if the majority of the voters, that majority of the homeowners, lot owners, and Palm Coast Plantation at that point in time, agree to be annexed, then the entire community, the entire subdivision comes in, including all of the common property owned by the homeowners association. So the parties felt that, homeowners association felt that was a good compromise, your city representatives felt that was a good compromise, and we're bringing it back to your, to consider that.
Council questions? I guess we need to open the meeting to the public, and for the public, wish to be heard on this item.
Jack Cal, Palm Coast. If they do what they want to do, what is it going to cost the city? And why do they want to be part of the city? I'd like to know that. People don't say, you know, take me in because I love you. People say, take me in because I want. You know, a lot of these people are the wants, and they think we're the givers. So I would like to know just what, the reason they want to be part of Palm Coast.
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, get back to City Council. But first, what will it cost the city? It won't cost the city anything. We have an agreed-upon service territory for water and sewer service. If you live in the city, you get those services at a certain price. If you live outside the city and you get those services, you pay 1.25 times what the residents pay. So there is a, an upcharge, if you will, if you want to live outside the city and avail yourself of the water and sewer services. Would that 25% additional cost be sufficient to make you want to become part of the city? Probably not, because if you become part of the city, you will pay city taxes as well as your county taxes. But we have had any number of properties in the past annex into the city, two huge ones west of US 1, Nioga Lakes properties and the Old Brick Township properties, they annexed into the city because they saw an advantage to them, to be part of a city, to have access to the full array of city services. That's a decision that each group of landowners, homeowners, would make on their own. And as the attorney points out, in order to annex a, for a piece of property to be annexed into the city, there has to be a vote of the property owners and the maj, I forget the breakdown, the majority have to approve, or if, it's a vote of the landlord.
Yeah, it depends on the nature of the property, whether it's developed or not developed.
If somebody owns 70% of the property.
It's in Chapter 171, very convoluted, but yes, Mr. Mayor, it depends on.
But it's a decision of each group of property owners, if they think there's an advantage, they will annex, if they don't, they won't. If they don't annex, they are not eligible for the full array of city services. I'll give you an interesting example, it's kind of a similar thing. In Flagler County, you have an East Flagler County Mosquito Control District. The people on the east side of the county want mosquito control, and they're willing to pay extra for it. They want that service. If you live in the west side of the county, there is no West Flagler County Mosquito Control District because they didn't want the service, and therefore, they don't pay for it. If you want the full array of services of a city, you become part of a city. If you don't, you remain unincorporated Flagler County. Mr. Landon.
If I may clarify.
Please.
The unique part about this is that we don't extend water sewer lines into areas that are not part of the city. And so, if you want us to extend water lines into it, you have to annex first, as a concept. This development or neighborhood actually was established, the water and sewer lines were installed when it was unincorporated county. So the lots were there, you know, and that's what makes this one unique from just a vacant piece of property that wants us to extend service to serve their undeveloped area. And so that won't, this doesn't change that requirement, that if you want water and sewer extended into your undeveloped area, then you'd have to become part of the city. So that's really what is unique about this given area, and that they already had a contract with a private water company that said that they would, those water and sewer lines obviously would give, so that's where we worked out the difference. So I just wanted to do that clarification.
Mr. Carroll, you'd appreciate the fact that what does it do for the taxpayers? By settling this through mediation, there won't be any more legal fees, so that's a benefit, maybe a small one.
No offense taken.
Yeah.
And, in addition to the 1.25 that the out-of-city people pay, there's an economy of scale. The costs of maintenance, the cost of rehabilitation is spread out over a greater base, so there's some advantages to this. Mr. DiLorenzo.
I think this is a pretty good agreement, and especially if you are familiar with the underlying water, Flagler County Water Agreement, and how that was written. I think that your legal team and staff did a really good job, and I'm pretty happy with how this language worked out.
Thank you.
Other comments? Before we take a vote, I'll just point out that two weeks ago, three weeks ago, sometime in the recent past, City Council went into executive session, which is a closed session with its attorneys, to discuss this issue, and I would point out that the minutes of that meeting, now that, assuming this resolution is accepted by council, this issue is resolved, and the minutes of those meetings will be made public.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, if you approve it tonight, then I assume somewhere with Palm Coast Plantation, their board will approve it, and then they're required, per students of this agreement, to dismiss the lawsuit. It's at that point in time when it's formally dismissed. Same, what you're saying, just wanted to, didn't want people to think.
At some point, you're going to see the minutes of that meeting if it excites you.
I didn't want the public to think that it's going to be tomorrow morning.
Your Honor, point of order, can we vote on this since it's not on the agenda?
It's actually listed on the agenda under City Attorney Matters. Yeah, we're doing a little different, but we thought it made sense to go ahead and put it under my report, since it's really just a report matter, but also with the formality of the resolution.
Any additional questions, comments, or is there a motion?
Second.
Removed in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries that objection. Discussion by City Manager of Matters, not on the agenda.
First of all, I want to piggyback on Mr. McGuire's comments about senior games. He's not taking any credit, but he actually was a major cause of us starting the senior games here in Palm Coast, and last year was very successful, and already starting off looking like it's going to continue to grow, like most of our other sporting events that we have here. And that kind of leads into this past weekend, we got a report that we had another very successful state cup soccer tournament here, over 60 teams, very pleased, once again, hotels full, restaurants crowded, et cetera. And then lacrosse next week, following week, and then come May, there'll be another. So we're back in full swing again, and very, very positive, always getting positive response. You're going to continue to see more and more of these type of events grow, and so I think that's very positive. Mayor, that's all, that's all I have right now, other than it rains too much in Oregon.
Well, that's nothing new.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I move, we adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.